Good afternoon all. Happy Friday Eve to you all again. Hopefully you're having a great beginning for some, your summer break, and for others, just a good time and good weather. We're gonna run through our last town hall of the year, of the school year, and go through a number of things and have a few conversations to close out the year. I must admit though, I'm gonna probably be distracted by two mics. I don't know how to operate with both of them at the same time, so I apologize. But nonetheless, there are a few things, as I have mics in front of my face, I think about when we celebrate the end of a year. There's a lot of things that we should be proud of. There's a lot of things that we've accomplished as a district, as a team, to get us where we are, and there's still some challenges along the way. The real reason why I put this picture up there, how many of you have seen or at least heard one acceptance speech for an award show before? Right? Like if you've seen the Academy Awards, the Grammys, any of those award shows, they always have, you know, they thank a number of people. But there's always like the catch-all thank you, to make sure that they didn't miss anyone. And I say that because I am notorious for thanking individuals and people with always forgetting someone and kicking myself later. So to start off today, I just want to thank you collectively for all the things that you've done to make this district great, and you'll see some individual points of pride as we go through. But in that reflection, I also think about the places we've been and the places where we still need to go. Anyone know the author of this wonderful story? Dr. Seuss, right? So Dr. Seuss talks about the journey. Talks about our ability to move from one place to the next, and for us, we're in the beginning phases of our journey, trying to figure out what our direction is, how we go on our direction and get to outcomes for our kids. And it started with a number of things, and so for the next 10 minutes or so, I'm just gonna walk through the things we went through this year, at least from my vantage point and through the district's vantage point, of what we've seen and things we've accomplished, and then ultimately where we still need to go. August to October, we actually spent a lot of time thinking and talking to a lot of individuals to find out, what is Lorraine about? What do we need to do? How do we need to address many issues? And spent a lot of time talking to individuals here at schools, city hall, just all over the city, to gain more perspective of what we needed to do. That was, you know, a good chunk of our time when we came in. I think at the end of the year, thinking of the number of faces and names that I've been able to see, I think it's easily over 3,500 different hands I was able to shake and smiles I was able to share throughout the course of the year, which I think was a great way to just to get to know individuals. From October on, it became this challenge for us, right? Ton of information came in. We had a partner that helped us think through what was going on. We had a ton of conversations with our community, and it brought us to this very real crossroads for us. So what are we gonna do? Now that you have this information, what are you gonna do? Two statistics jump out to me that say we could've gone one of two directions. One, we heard from our teacher saying, you know what? I need better feedback. I need to grow. I wanna grow. I wanna get better, but I need better support to do so. On the other side, we see, and it looks like the biggest piece here is that when we think about our program, when we think about the instruction, we need to improve the quality of instruction that is in our classrooms every single day. So one side says, you know what? We need to figure out, you know, all those programs and everything that's working or not, and then on the other side, we have to figure out our leadership structure. I intentionally said in August that I would not attempt to go in and infuse a lot of energy on the teaching side yet, because I wanted teachers to have the space to teach. I didn't think it would've been fair for me to come in and place judgment on the programs they were using, the curriculum that they had in front of them, the resources they were using, without knowing more. On the other side, I realized that if we're ever going to support our teachers better, we have to make sure that we have the right leaders in each and every one of our buildings. So that's the path that we decided to take. And in that path, we decided, you know what? Once we are able to identify, you know, what leadership and focus on leadership the first year is important, we have to start to now say, you know, what are we actually gonna do? So if you can imagine, if you've been on a plane the first few minutes, and for those that have been on the plane, you probably know the script that's always read, right? Every single flight, without fail, what the flight attendant will say, what you are expected to do. And it's important because not only from a safety standpoint, it's important, but from just a standpoint of understanding where we're going before we get there, it's important to communicate that. And so during the months of November and January, that's what we did. We spent a lot of time talking to individuals and communicating the vision for what it will look like, attempted to answer questions and concerns that were coming up around the Lorraine Promise and the direction we were trying to go, and spent a lot of time just aligning all of the functions that the Lorraine Promise was now gonna ask of us, meaning, you know, if we have a focus or a need to get to our families, we probably need an office that addresses that. If we have a need around or a concern around our behavior and school culture, we probably need people to be able to take that on as well. So that function then created the form, our organizational chart, which I think dates back to December and January when it was first introduced. From there, we said, okay, great. Who's gonna get on the bus? Who's joining us in this process? And that process began as early as December, when we said, you know what? School leaders, we need to know exactly if you're gonna be on or off the bus with us, and had conversations upon conversations with their leaders, and began a very detailed and robust approach to finding the best talent. For those that were in the interview process, some of you are probably still sweating from it, but it was very, it was intentional, right? For those that were in it, I don't think you can say it wasn't intentional, because we wanted to make sure that we had the right leaders for our teachers in each of our buildings next year. Spent a lot of time doing that, plus the idea of, you know, great, we're gonna have new leaders, we're gonna have a strengthened leadership team at each school, but what are we gonna do? What are those initiatives that are coming? So through the months of February, May, we had those task force groups that were working side by side with many of the district leaders that you see here today, to think about those big five initiatives and how they were gonna play out next year. Then we said, you know what? There's a group of people we haven't spoken a ton to. Spoke to a lot of adults, a lot of stakeholders and community members, but we didn't talk to our kids. At least we didn't talk to all of our kids. Every Friday or every other Friday, it seemed like I had a group of kids that I was speaking to, and they gave, you know, the things they love. I bet you all can name at least two or three things kids wanted differently next year. What was number one on their list?
Food.
Food. Number one. They won, you know, they're top of mind, always. Can we have, um, you know, my grandma's lasagna? I said, no, we can't really bring that into school every single day, but they, they were asking for food. What was number two?
Real food.
Wow. She must've been at one or two of these meetings. Trips. They wanted to go see things. They wanted to get out of the building. They wanted to see the world around them, right? So those were the top two things kids were saying, again, in one-on-one, small group meetings, but that gave us a start to say, you know, there's probably a whole bunch more. So towards the end of the spring, we actually had a survey, conducted a survey for our third graders all the way up through high school, to actually take a pretty in-depth survey through a group called Youth Truth. And this survey is something used nationally. It's nationally normed survey, asked very specific questions that align to everything from relationship building with their peers and teachers, to how rigorous kids really perceive learning to be. So we gave it to all of our kids, and here are a few things that our kids are saying. On the elementary side of things, again, these are the areas in which are outlined in the Youth True survey. Again, everything from academics to their perception of their relationships in and out of the classroom, and you can see where our kids land. And this is again percentile. This was nationally, I'm sorry, in the state of Ohio, where we would land percentile-wise as for how our elementary kids feel about school. From academic rigor expectation, they feel like, you know what? You know, we're about the 35th percentile in the state, or the fact that they're engaged about the 10th percentile. So when we think about our elementary kids, we have a lot to do to engage them more deeply, right? Our middle school kids said something similar, but you can see the academic rigor line start to shift a bit there, and them wanting more. You can also see where they land amongst relationships with their teachers and peers. Again, the percentile, obviously, we want to be closer to 100%, and you can see where our kids are saying and how they actually feel. These are our kids. These are our kids telling us that we need to do something different. There are a few things that jumped out to me about this that were caught in a couple quotes by our kids, and these, again, the way that the information comes to you is just a, there's a chart like this, and a whole bunch, 132-page report, in addition to a spreadsheet that just gives you the comments, it doesn't tell you where it comes from, other than the grade level. So here are a few comments from kids, so I didn't edit it. These are directly from kids. Talk to an elbow partner, what do you see from these quotes from our kids? All right. I'll take a few thoughts. Anyone wanna share? What does this kinda elicit to you? What does it pull out for you? Everyone's looking down now. They don't wanna look up and catch eyes with me. As I move towards them, there's something in their eye instantly. Yes, Rachel, and I'll come back to you, Ms. James. Our kids want a voice. Our kids want a voice.
Nobody's listening.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Mr. Newman?
I don't know.
Mm-hmm. 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 Because if you think about it, it's actually not surprising that a lot, and again, there was a ton of other comments and, again, similar anecdotes from kids. If we think about the age that we live in, where do they get the most attention from now? From their phones. They log on to social media, and what are they looking for?
Likes.
Likes. Likes, right? It triggers dopamine in their brain to say, wow, I feel valued, right? So they're looking for those shots of dopamine to make them feel really good about themselves, and they're looking for adults to help us do that. And I say adults, because that's a collective district challenge. That's not, you know, the custodian or security guard. It's not the teacher. It's not just the principal. It is all of us, thinking about how do we help serve and support our kids to make them feel loved, right? So, oh wait, before I go on to that last week, so that was February through May. The other interesting piece that came out of this data, especially at the high school end, this demographic, like if you break this down by demographics, there was also something that really jumped out. You will see in high school that our white students for academic rigor are in the 59th percentile. You will find for Hispanic students, that drops down to 22 percentile. And for African-American students, 8 percentile, is what they perceive, right? When you look at relationships, our Hispanic students actually feel it's about 40 percent, 40 percentile. As you look at our African-American students, it was in the 20 percentile, and around the same for our white students. The other piece that really bothered me as well, as we think about our peers and the relationships they have with each other. Our African-American students were the highest as they fill like peer-to-peer relationship, but our lowest were our white students. Only 1% of them felt connected to their school. So I say all of that to say that there's a lot of work to do in building the relationships we wanna see with our kids. The good news is, we have data to use to figure out what to do with it now, and how we actually approach our kids differently collectively as a community. So, that was very sobering data, right? So we have to figure out how to kinda fuel up, right? And so the months of May and June, July, we're figuring out now what do we need to do with it. Great, we have the data, we know what we know, and now we have to figure out what to do with it. So we're figuring out how do we fill our gas tank to go forward. And so throughout the month of May and through July, there are a few things that are being enacted and created and finalized. The Lorraine Way. The Lorraine Way is basically the outline of how we're gonna take the Lorraine Promise and put it into action. It was sent out to the district a few days ago, a few days before school, or actually the last day before school was let out, so that people at least had a chance to look at it, reference it, ask questions, bring it back to them when they come back in August, rather than getting hit with it again at the beginning of the school year. So Lorraine Way outlines our collective, our shared expectations of each other. Everything from how we're gonna approach and think about academics, how we're gonna talk about a lot of that relationship building that needs to be addressed, and how we as people should be celebrated, honored, and supported. Second piece is, right now, some school leaders are here, they didn't get enough of us earlier today, but the School Leader Summit started yesterday. We were able to start the day off with some tremendous waffles. We had our leadership team build out waffles for all of our leaders, and I know the best waffles came from this waffle maker. Just saying, Josh, no comments, please. But not that it was a competition at all, but no, it was, it was a really good kickoff, I believe, to the new step, the first step for us as a district. So our leaders are with us for eight days to focus solely on school culture, academics, and how we come together as teams. And they'll tell you the first step was, understanding each other a little bit by telling each other's leadership story. Understanding our district's core values. Today was a lot about what do standards look like? How do they, how do we break those standards down so that we can support our teachers better and ultimately improve instruction? So over the next eight days, our leaders will get a lot of information to prepare themselves to go into next year. And then the last kinda was a conversation, a continued conversation that I probably have had with myself, but with a number of individuals of how do we hear and truly appreciate the voice of our teachers more deeply? I'll be the first to tell you, again, the two paths at the beginning of the year, the energy, my energy, our collective energy, was to get the leadership teams right, to get the organization in better shape. What was ignored were teachers. I feel terrible that that feeling came across our teachers, honestly. The reality of the situation is, that is the step, the next step we need to take. And so part of that is to create a teacher executive advising network who will have that space with myself, with our senior leaders, to talk, to give feedback, in addition to going to see places that they should see and experience. For example, later this year, actually, yeah, later this year, in September, we're planning to go to San Antonio, Texas, to see IDA Public Schools. If you're at the high school meeting last week, we showed a clip of how they do signing day, was anywhere there last week, to see that video, a few folks. We're going there to see it. So members of that executive advising committee will have an opportunity to go see it firsthand as well, and give us feedback on what we need to do differently. I haven't created any parameters around that, other than I wanted to make sure it's known that that is a priority. We have to figure out how to support and make sure our teachers feel loved, and make sure that they're getting support they need to be successful in classrooms. So that's through the month of July and creating that engine. So then, we can ride off into the sunset, right? Like now, we're all done, we can move on. But we know the reality is, as beautiful as this scenery is, the reality is, there's still a lot of questions. There's a lot of things that are unknown, there's a lot of uncertainty and concern, and I get that. And the only way that we answer questions is for people to ask them, and people to push us, push our thinking, and really unpack the challenge ahead of us, and spend some time really digesting what we need to do differently. And along the way, there still will be some curves, and there will be some bumps, and there will be some things that we have to work out, but we do so, we can do so, if we're able to ask ourselves the tough questions and get to tough answers. So that we can all rest easy at night. I can't say sleeping has been easy the past year, but at some point, I think we will all be able to sleep easy if we come together and answer tough questions. But there are a few things that have created moments of feeling like, you know what? We're doing the right thing. There are moments that I think we all should be proud of, and as a community can lean on to build the momentum necessary to move forward. A few of those on the operational side, we were refunded a large sum of money over the terms of our bond, because we were, we created a savings for our taxpayers, and ultimately, that created savings for us. When we started way back in August, one of the first things that was a challenge was our healthcare challenge. We found a solution that is sustainable and will now work. We were also to make sure that, you know, going back to our kids feeling loved, the question around like, are kids coming to school clean, with clean clothes? We're gonna have a washer and dryer in each one of our schools next year, to ensure that our kids, if there's moments of needing clean clothes, they have them, because there's washer and dryers in the building. Across the district, we've also spent a lot less on our energy costs, which seems like a small thing, but if you think about the overall cost of an operating district of 6,000-plus kids, that's a big savings for us to spend money on kids, by saving money there. The last piece is, and this is something that, again, I think the Strategy Office and the Finance Office is extremely proud of and should be. As a district, we had been for some times in financial and fiscal caution because of the way we had spent money in the past. Through their diligence and through, I think Josh's quote of "at or below," every day, it's like we're at or below, we're not spending more than we need, and if we are spending, we're spending in the right areas, we are no longer in fiscal caution. And I think that's worthy of a round of applause for that team who's been working hard to make sure that we're saving money. So when we received that letter, I guess it was about a week ago, we were able to sleep a little bit easier at night. So it gave us that feeling of like, you know what? We can now lay in a bed of leaves after you rake them all up and make sure they're all in one spot, even though you're kinda itchy after that, right? But anyway, that's beside the point. But it gave us that feeling of comfort, that we actually, we've accomplished something big for our district. From the managerial side, again, a lot of this year was about leadership, school and district leadership, and finding the right people. And I was very nervous about how we were gonna go about finding the right people. I was actually even more nervous about how many people would actually raise their hand and say, you know what? I wanna be part of that change, both locally and nationally, given, you know, the things that we see, whether it's on TV, in the paper, Facebook, or all those other places where people get information. I was very worried about how many people would say, you know what? I'm gonna jump in that with you. So at first, I'll be honest, when we opened up, I was like, look, if we get 10 to 15 applicants, it'd be a really good day. But to see that for our senior leadership positions, we had over 500 applications. For our school leadership applications, over 180 applications. And for the fact that I love the most is that for all those positions, 97% of those leaders said yes. They said they want it to be here. And that doesn't happen everywhere. Friends in St. Louis who I've talked to, they're still struggling to find principals. They're still struggling to find the right people to lead their schools, but it feels good here that we've come this far, and there's a belief. Secondly, we have a communications team. So if you've started to see more text messages and emails and things of that nature, we do have a team that is here to support our communications, ensure that we're doing the right thing. They do a wonderful job, they're over there, right now, they're like making sure that this is going well, I can tell, I can see it in Sarah's face, she wants to make sure that it's going well. But more importantly, this communication team is gonna increase our clarity of communication and the frequency of it. But you'll see, we still need your help to figure out how to make that go as well. And then lastly, which has been a concern, and I wanna be careful on how I speak to this, because I know it's a very sensitive topic, right? When we thought about this year and the changes and the concerns around teachers losing jobs, I just wanted to make sure people knew that that was not the plan and is not the plan. Did we move people to, from Title I positions at academic coaches, to teaching positions? Yes. But no teachers were riffed. The concern that it was brought to me multiple times is that you're riffing a whole bunch of teachers. I'm not. That has not happened. From the instructional standpoint, excuse me, we're getting more of our kids into higher and more rigorous coursework. We're changing the way we're thinking about instruction, especially at the high school. Seeing that next year, we'll have an incoming class of 165 scholars that will be in our early college academy as LCC walks in the door. Perfect timing. It's perfect timing. And seeing that that number grow is extremely powerful. In addition, for the first time in many years, we will have advanced placement courses, and have four of them, to be exact, and we'll look to grow them over the next few years so our kids are getting the rigorous coursework that they deserve. One big exciting piece for our middle and high school scholars and teachers, next year we were able to kind of make our budget work with the savings we were able to create so that each and every one of our sixth through 12th grade scholars will have a laptop in their hands to utilize for instruction. No more needing to share and push around carts around the building, no reason, no more, you know, little Johnny's pushing the R key too many times. Well, that's his R key. That's his computer. And we have built a plan so over the next three or four years, that that's sustainable as we try to grow all the way from K to 12. And the reality of the situation is, because we're able to get one-to-one devices for sixth through 12th grade, those devices, those other devices, that iPads and things like that, will be pushed down to our K to 5. So we actually feel pretty confident that most of our kids throughout the district will have their own personal device in some way. So I think that's a huge piece as we go into the world of technology. We have an instructional vision. A lot of concerns are, you know, what is instruction? What should instruction look like? What does instruction look like in Lorraine? And we spent some time over the past few months crafting that out. I will speak a little bit more about how that will unfold in a second, but having it and naming and giving a vision to it is important, because we haven't had one. We haven't had a direction. And then lastly, our performance-driven dashboard is literally days away from being finalized and open to everyone. I know there have been principals and teachers who have seen it and have played with it a little bit and are excited about it. So having a place where we can see how we're performing is very close to being ready to go. Additional points, and again, we cannot ignore, wonderful things that are happening on our athletic fields and across the district in other ways. Over 60 of our scholar athletes were awarded, and our coaches were awarded for either first team, all-league, state, coach of the year across our district. 60 different individuals. We had a state Final Four basketball team for the first time since 1988. And our TV 20 crew, 1 million views, close to 1 million views, which I think is really, really powerful. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention some of the excellence that's happening amongst our scholars that are performing in the performing arts, or those scholars that, I mean, Pablo, for example, has been featured on TV for his excellence in music. We have a lot of good things to celebrate. However, that narrative hasn't been the narrative, and that communications team are working hard to change that narrative for, for our district. Then this happened, which was huge for our district. The Cleveland Browns reached out to us and said, you know what? We would love to support your athletic programs. And more importantly, their message has been very clear, that it's not just about the athletes on the field, it's about the athletes that are then in the classroom. They were very clear in the message that it's not just about breaking ground for a new turf for our kids, but realizing we have to do more for them academically. So big day for the district. One of the biggest single donations ever given to Lorraine by one entity in a day is in the building of this field, and the Cleveland Browns. So something else that we're very proud that we were able to celebrate. And to the fact that, I don't know if you followed the latest news from the Browns, you know what? They actually think we're gonna be pretty good. I think, I think we're gonna get a couple wins. Couple meaning 10, sorry. Sorry, meaning 10. But nonetheless, I think it's encouraging to see the energy that they brought and the energy it brought to that day for those that were there. It was a very powerful day for our community. And then there's one thing that's missing, one thing that isn't, hasn't come up yet, and it's intentional, and I wanna go back to that crossroads picture again, where we focused a lot on leadership and a lot less on how we're thinking about supporting teachers yet. I know for a fact, when we get our final scores back, there's not gonna be a huge jump after this first year. And I knew that going into it. The plan was to get the foundation right, to get the right people on the bus, to get the right leaders here to start with us next year, and realizing when we get our academic data back, and all of our academic data back, I am for sure, people are gonna say, well, after a year, he didn't change academic scores, throw it out as well. But that was not our focus. That was not our intention. So when you start to hear that narrative, just know, remember this time, this day, at 5:29 on June 14th, that today, my grandmother's birthday, by the way, I have to call her, that our focus was getting the right people on the bus, and our focus was on leadership. So we can make sure that our academics for young people like that young man sitting there, he gets what he needs. So with that said, though, John Wooden, someone I admire a lot, just captures the work ahead. If you want something done quickly, we could've did, we could've dropped a whole bunch of new curricular materials on teachers' desks, we could've mandated it longer out, we could've done a lot of things, but that, that doesn't solve the bigger issue. Putting a Band-Aid on things are things that we've done way too long in urban education. It's time to actually fix problems, and that takes time. So with that said, there was one big problem that we had to fix, and it started with creating a solution. And the solution, the strategy, is through the Lorraine Promise. How we're gonna do it lines up to the Lorraine Way, meaning how we're actually gonna make sure that promise comes to life and the work that needs to get done by shared district-wide expectations. And then if we're able to mix that with our core values and think about how those six pieces come together to make us great, we're gonna create excellence. That excellence will- expectations. And then if we're able to mix that with our core values and think about how those six pieces come together to make us great, we're gonna create excellence. That excellence will happen. It's just gonna take us to kind of stand up next to each other, look at each other in the face and say, we're gonna do this. It's, it's no longer an option for us to look the other direction or, or just become negative, it's, the option is to move forward collectively. And therefore, growth will be ahead. And with this growth comes a lot of hard work, a lot of time in the gym, a lot of time doing things when no one is watching, and, and other times, even when people are watching, continuing to work hard regardless of the circumstances. And as you can see, Muhammad Ali is one of the best and worked extremely hard regardless of who was watching. And sometimes those that are watching are watching to see if you're gonna grab the chocolate or create the golden ticket. They're wanting to see if, you know what, you're gonna be tempted and you're gonna just kind of go back to the way things were, or you're gonna go for it and, and try to get that, that golden ticket. And over the course of the first three or four months, we were lucky enough to stumble across an opportunity for an organization to support us differently. This organization said there is a national grant that is given to a select few number of districts across the country who are saying, you know what, they're trying to do something dramatically different. And I will say, with a lot of our, our, our local press, that local press helped create a national conversation, and so I was called for a lot of different things because of the controversy and everything else. And people said, you know what, so what are you trying to do? And through those conversations, it garnered a conversation with those that lead the Breakthrough Results Fund. They came in this past year, I can't remember exactly when they were here, they came in and actually spent an exhaustive long day with every member of our team saying, are they for real? Basically asking us, are we for real? Are we really trying to make the change we want to see for all of our kids? And they serve and they work in, this is Achievement Network, who, who leads the Breakthrough Results Fund, work with 800 schools across the country, 100 systems across 22 states. So they are, you know, top-notch, they're kind of like the Nike of standards-based work and assessment. Came to us and said, you know what, you should apply for this grant. Now granted, they work with all these schools, granted, there's only gonna be five selected across the country. We said, okay, let's see what happens. We found that through our need for improving teaching and how we approach teaching, through our need to improve learning and how we're drastically attempting to go after it, and through the strategies that will make us successful, we were able to be and were selected as one of the five systems across the country. One of five school systems across the country, and through the next four years, will receive $1 million to support our kids. So now, it kind of makes us feel a little bit better because we got our golden ticket, right? We got our golden ticket. So I say all this to say, that news not only was wind under our collective sails, but it gives us the, the insight that people are watching. And people see that this is a different day in Lorraine. Here's an opportunity for us as a district to make a name for our city again, for the right reasons. And it's exciting when a national, a leader in academics and achievement and, and student growth says, you're one of five systems across the country, here's your golden ticket. It means a lot. So as we go forward, we have to figure out where we're gonna start. So the first thing I ask you all, please read the Lorraine Way during your, your spare time so you can see our shared expectations. If you're interested in the Teacher Executive Advisory Network, to be, if you want to be a part of that, please let Sarah or Eric know, they're right over there. The Big Five Initiatives, get to know them, understand them, understand the things that we're pushing on next year. If you are a, a teacher outside of the, the Teacher Executive Advisory Network and you want to just give your voice on other topics of what's going on, we're here to listen and those two individuals will get you into the right focus group. August 13th for teachers is a big day because that's our first day for Professional Collaboration Days, where we're gonna get a, a chance to work with Achievement Network and folks from there to make sure that we're getting you everything you need in a different way than you've ever seen before. The, the days in which we had PowerPoints, you would just kind of sit there like you're doing now and just get information are over. We have to find a way to collaborate together, to create lesson plans, to work together towards outcomes versus having someone standing up here and telling you what you should be doing. It should be a collaborative process. We'll have back-to-school celebrations, you'll get more information about what that will look like as we come back to school. And then the big day is the day our kids walk back into school. I think some parents are probably already looking forward to that day. But I'm also sure there's a bunch of teachers and leaders who are as well. So with that said, the hallways are empty now. But in a few days, a few months, we'll start together for these young people and do what's right. So I thank you for being here tonight, and I'll open it up to any questions. No questions? Great, we can all go. Any questions? Yes, sir.
The problem is that you seem to be doing a great job, you know, and, and the board doesn't seem to appreciate that, and it's wanting to have an adversarial role, and I don't understand that at all. I thought I knew some of the people on the, on the board, but I guess I don't. You know, I mean, I, I'm surprised that some of the activities that are going on, I think you deserve a chance to prove it, you know, one way or the other. I do have a question about that one, that one, was one person who said was not qualified or a couple weren't qualified. I never turned out, never saw anything, knew about that. Whatever happened with that?
Yeah. And I don't think she's here, I don't see her. It's funny enough, so the week after, and obviously, she was just graduating from grad school, she sent me an email and she said, Mr. Hardy, I'm so sorry that that hit the paper, and I'm thinking, there's nothing for you to apologize. I mean, that's very natural for people to graduate and then get the degrees and kind of, you know, move into leadership positions. But she said, just in case, here's something for you. And she attached her certification. So it is a process. For, for leaders who are coming into leadership, it is a process. They have to file paperwork, you have to go through the state, there's a little bit of bureaucracy that goes in there and red tape, but those, those things are finalized for all of our, our leaders. And for those that are not, they can still get certified, they can work through the certification, it just takes time to get it done. But for that individual who was in the paper, she has her certificate. Great question, though. Other questions? Yeah, sure.
There was a paper that was, that was clarified, you know, but that was never, I never saw anything in the paper that said that that was, and the only thing you hear is that, you know, the person wasn't qualified, blah, 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 and others, other side of the story. You know, that's what, I think that should have highlighted that that person was qualified. But, you know, this person who mentioned it not qualified a week or so ago, and that hiring people that are not qualified, so on and so forth, you know, it's just I don't understand it. I just, it just, to me, it just seems that, that people just don't want to make it successful. They want to pick that, pick it apart and not go with programs. I mean, you can't discount something just after one year. You know, you have to go see, after two or three years, I might be on another side of the story. You know, but right now, I'm figuring with it.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
Temporary, temporary certification, or a lot of it for a year. I'm telling you, it was something I said, but it's, it's happened before, that people they hire, if not, if didn't have certification, what they need. I kind of knew that stuff like a social worker or something, they pay for their tuition and then, oh, that's okay. I'm kind of being a little young. They pay for their tuition, so they need social workers, but you never saw anything that they paid for a re-vert, somebody in the social work. So I couldn't find anything out to have, and so, did they hire another social worker that wasn't qualified or what? I could never find a hundred, hundreds of them, so we have to be careful what you're hearing. That's the reason.
Hello? I am ready, I, I might sit down for this one, just in case, no, just kidding. Yes, ma'am. I did need to sit down for that one. So we are simplifying the dress code and we're looking to provide a ton of clarity. It's gonna be very simple, it'll be blue or gray, blue or gray, and Miss Press, is that accurate? Do I have, kind of? Khaki, sorry, yes, khakis bottoms. So that will be clarified and sent out. There was a parent that actually asked about that at the last meeting. We're looking to just get something out to parents so they are aware. We're also working behind the scenes to actually make that a lot easier for, for our families. Other questions? Wow, it must be summer or something. Yes.
But are we going to be receiving curriculum that aligns with the standards and aligns with the tests, not only the state tests, but with the, in the tests that are given at the beginning of the year or in the middle of the year that are run by the district?
So it depends on how you define curriculum, and that gentleman over there, our, our Chief Equity and Achievement Officer who just walked in, could probably give you more insight. But it's depending on how you define curriculum. If you mean curriculum by another set of textbooks or things of that nature, we won't be investing in a different set of textbooks and things of that nature. What we're gonna do is make sure that our assessments that we give from the district lens, our interim assessments, are given to teachers first. So teachers have a, a chance to actually look at it, even take it, see what's on it, and then backwards map from there, what lessons should come out of that, that assessment. So for example, if they know there's 10 standards that are gonna be assessed on this first assessment, have time, which I think is the other big crucial piece, is having time, time to actually map out what those individual lessons will look like, and then use the pacing guy, because the pacing guy's gonna help you think through that, and then use the resources at your fingertips to make sure that you're mastering those, those standards. So to answer your question, new curricular textbooks? No, not necessarily. But we are gonna make available to you those open source, resources that help align with those standards a little bit easier before assessments, not, you know, afterwards where it's too late. So know, the shift is really gonna be how we think about planning, how we think about looking at assessment, and therefore giving you time to do so.
Level of thorough enough?
Actually, all grade levels, yeah, all grade levels. So we have our early childhood director who is focusing solely on pre-K to do, to, so that will be a shift there on how we're looking at curriculum as well, but third through 12 will also look differently. With the biggest shift being, we need to get teachers to see the assessments that we're giving throughout the year and getting a chance to plan from them, plan backwards from them. Other questions? And lastly, that's on your seat before you go, if you haven't already, there are two things. Gives you a quick snapshot of the Lorraine Way, like what is in it, so you have a chance if you want to read deeper, there's, it's like a 16-page document, so you can see all the things that are expected of all of us going into next year. But behind that, there is also a survey. We're constantly looking for more and more information from you all around how we can get better, especially from the community. So if you have a few minutes to fill this out, that would be greatly appreciated before you leave. But outside of that, we don't have any additional information at this time, but we do wish that you and yours have a great summer break, enjoy your time with family, and we'll talk soon. It is, so there is, the question was, is this also online that you can fill it out? There is a, an online link on here as well. There's also a QR code, if you scan it with your phone, it'll pop up on your phone and you can take it there. But ideally, if you could, because we would love your feedback, is to grab this information here. You will also get information in another email that'll give you a, a survey for additional opportunities to engage with us as well. So there's two surveys, but this one is a paper copy if you could fill it out, okay? None? I'm so sorry. There's more up front, but I will make sure they come back to you, okay? Mr. Newman?
Another question, Mr. Hardy, I do have a comment.
Yes.
Please bear with me.
Sure.
When World War II ended, Churchill got a lot of adulation and praise. And humbly, he said, I appreciate all this, but there have been many great people born to this earth with nothing to be great about. I believe the Lorraine Promise has given your team, our teachers, our students, and this community a framework to be great about something.
Truly appreciate it. Thank you so very much, Mr. Newman. With that, I'm saying no more words. He closed the show. Thank you all, have a good day. This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.